Councilmember Cosrally?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Moga?
Here.
Robell?
Here.
Schumlober?
President.
Mayor Campbell.
We see Kevin Esposito, our tax assistant, to discuss pending tax appeals. We have to... Is this private or...
I believe a portion of it will be private, Mayor, as it relates to pending litigation.
Okay. But there's other parts pending. Right? There's part of it that's not pending.
The majority of it is not...
Pardon me?
The majority of it is filed publicly.
Yeah. Keep this in public, okay?
Absolutely.
Councilmember, can you kind of pass this down? Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. I'd like to announce that we recently had a very big victory in tax court settling on the Forest Hill Country Club. That property tax appeal has been in place since the year 2008. They filed directly after the reval. And as you can see from the exposure analysis, what they were looking to win as a refund was almost $800,000. As a result of our victory in tax court recently, the judge affirmed all claims. So basically, there is zero refunding on that. That was a joint effort... Majority... The majority of that case was driven by the Belville side. Chris Dracco, our attorney, did a great job. Ultimately, Blumfeld also had their own counsel. We shared experts on the Plaza side. So that was a big win for us. Also, as you can see in the next page of my report, I gave you a detailed list of all tax appeals in town, the filings. Last year, we had the lowest number of appeals filed since our reval in 2007. Prior to the reval, appeals were below 200 annually. Last year, we totaled at 262, but as you can see in '09, we're at 458. So when it comes to tax appeals, that is on solid ground.
Just a quick question.
Yes.
Now, with that reval that they ordered, will this help us with the appeal for that?
For the country club?
No, no. On the overall town. That the county wants us to reval the entire town, right?
Well, we got that reval order pending, yes.
Right. So, I mean, you can appeal that order, can't you? Go ahead.
The county of Essex prefers to have all of their revaluations done within a 10-year basis, okay?
Okay.
The city of New York was revalved in the fifties. And then they dragged their heels when they got reval orders on numerous occasions. They finally conducted a reval in 2003. Well, they did their second reval in 2013, 10-year anniversary.
Right.
Fortunately for Belville, our ratio is still very good. Our ratio is 98 percent.
Okay.
Which means that, at the end of the day, the majority of our properties are kind of worth what they're assessed at.
What they say.
What they're assessed at. We could certainly explore the possibilities of defying that reval order, but I don't think it would be a popular reaction from the county tax administration.
Okay.
So personally, as much as I don't want to see the district have to spend the money on a revaluation, we'll wind up with much better records going forward and hopefully we'll be able to contain the volume of appeals. The third page of my report is a list of properties that I filed overrides on to further prevent refunding for this year. As you can see at the bottom, as a result of the 20-plus overrides that I filed, we've saved $264,000 in refunding in the 2016 budget. So that's a wonderful feature, a wonderful function that I can do. Our last page of my report, we have had a dramatic increase in the volume of deeds recorded. Last year was a record year for Belville. We had 561 recorded deeds in the municipality. As you can see, that volume has tremendously increased. So if there's been any increases, it's not necessarily been with the appeals. If you have a decrease there, we had a volume of deeds. A lot of that's with the result of the current market activity leading up to town. We've got more properties transacting, prices going for well above assessed value in some cases, due to renovations that have been made to a lot of the existing housing supply now.
That seems to be cyclical, too, from what I can... You know, what I'm looking at here, it's gone up as high as, it's like, 4.2?
Yeah.
When it came down, it went back up. So that kind of runs...
It follows the real estate market. Between the market was between 4.5 and 6.
The bubble.
So it's going to follow the real estate market.
The market, okay.
The other thing that you see is a lot of dollar deed transfers as a result of refinances.
Okay.
And unfortunately, every now and then, we also see a foreclosure deed in there. And the foreclosures take a lot longer to take place, and they don't always happen as rapidly as they once did. There was a war torn on foreclosures for a period of time. But at a tax court level, you can discuss pending litigation in private session.
Do you want to make a motion?
You want to private?
Second.
Councilmember Cosrally?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Moga?
Yes.
Ms. Harin?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Schumlober?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Moga?
Here.
Netari?
Here.
Robell?
Here.
Schumlober?
President.
Mayor Campbell.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Johnson, the case that has been presented in the past in your public importance of the open public meetings, well, none of this is clear.
Yes.
Today, we started to work on the 15-inch diameter sanitary sewer on Doralman Street. Tomorrow, we'll be installing the insertion valve on the water line so we can actually shut it down, all right? And then they can begin to repair on the sanitary sewer. We also started installing 500 feet of 8-inch sanitary sewer at the new senior housing, and we expect to finish that by next week. The corner's work at Town Hall is almost complete with the exception of the corner on the Belville Avenue side, and we need to have Mr. Harris inspect that before we sign off on how to actually pay. We also had a meeting... I'm sorry?
I just have a question.
Oh, sure.
Steve was in emergency... He was in emergency.
Yes, they were actually... I'm sorry, council.
I'm just curious. The same thing in the meeting. You got microphones up there, haven't you? You're not going to use them, take them down, please?
We're using a microphone, I believe.
We're putting up a noise from these things up here.
I'm talking into it.
I know.
There's nothing more I can do except it's...
Open your mouth, that's what you do.
No, if you stop talking into the audience and having little meetings, maybe you'll hear us.
I'm sorry. I'm not talking.
There was other people talking.
Go ahead.
I saw them working, and I was just curious because, you know, usually that says to me that maybe stuff is falling off.
There was, in fact, material falling off. What it is, it's the same material. It's like terracotta that they use up on the top of the building. And what happened, because of water and just age, it was beginning to peel, and there were some barricades that you saw out here. So what happened was, the previous manager, Mr. Esposito, authorized a repair of a portion of it, all right? What we did was, we authorized the additional repair because there were other sections of the building where it was falling. And we, quite frankly, didn't have enough time to put it back out to bid, and it would have cost us more money for them to stop working on the one section and remobilize it. The sanitary sewer on Doralman Street was also an emergency. That's why it's under new business as an emergency, which we expect to cost around $60,000 plus or minus, because we didn't, again, we didn't have time to draw specs. That road was closed, and we want to get it open and get that sewer repaired. Okay. We also met with the lawyers for the Finkelsteins to discuss the redevelopment of that property. It was a very congenial meeting, and I believe it will bear some fruit in the near future. We have also had... We're in the process of developing some bond ordinances for some grants that we have and some additional work. One is for generators at several of our facilities: Town Hall, DPW, the garage of light, the Friendly House. And also, we have some street work that we want to do, that we need to front the money on. It's DOT work and CBPG work, in addition to some local roads that we're doing, in the amount of like $2.6 million, which is right around the amount that we normally run. The generators will probably cost us around $700,000. We had a closing date of last Friday, March 4th, to accept resumes for a part-time judge. We received five resumes. The committee will set a date. I'll do that through the clerk's office, and we will select the judge. We're also in discussion with Civil Service about the appointment of the court administrator and the deputy administrator. There's a conflict between the law and a direction from Civil Service, so we're trying to clear that up. I spoke with Kathy Elliott Shaw from the Green Acres program down in Trenton about a tract around at the municipal stadium. She's researching it. She sent me some pictures today that did not have a tract, but just had them in the cat and walking area. So we're going to continue those discussions, and Tom Harris is also following up, so hopefully we can get a tract back. I met with Mr. Egan, the state monitor over at the Board of Ed, to talk about shared services. And what we decided was, we will put a committee together of the governing body, and they will put a committee together to discuss a wide range of shared services. I know we spoke a while ago. I wanted to raise it again this evening. I recommend that we put out an RFQ for grant-writing services. And there are some grants that are just box-top grants. You fill out the application, you send it in, you get the money. But there are some more detailed grants for much larger amounts, all right, that we may be missing the vote on. So with your approval, I'll move ahead to do that. I also was in discussion with Rich Kavanaugh and Phil Salmon of the fire department to speak about minimum staffing levels and how we can achieve that. And they're going to get back to me on how we can realize some savings and some changes about the way we do business so that we can assure the utmost safety, not only for our firemen, but also for our residents. Last but not least, we had a request from an adjacent property owner, Smith Street in Union Terrace, who was interested in purchasing a small strip of land. It's four feet by nine and a half feet at the other end for 104 feet in length. I'll be dealing with that through the town attorney's office, because the value of the land is less than what an appraisal would cost, so we believe we are well within our rights of offering it to adjacent property owners. And that's all I have.
Do you have anything?
Nope.
Did we come up with a date yet for the alternate side of the street parking? I have dozens of residents that want to know.
Do we send it?
No, to get back into...
I spoke with Deputy Chase Minikini today. I believe the date is going to be March 24th. And what we're going to do before we do that, we're going to have our second chance folks that volunteer for us go down Graylock Park, who was driving around today, and just as a result of the winter, there's gravel on that median there. So we're going to have them sweep all that. We're going to start putting the sweepers out, all right, to do main roads like that, to clean up the middle of the street. Then we're going to go back to alternate side of the street parking so we clean the balance of the street.
Because all the residents all want to get tickets.
Yeah, I don't blame them.
You know, maybe we could send that before someone went out.
We are. We plan on doing that, man. Yes.
Also, the benches for the sitting park?
The benches, I meant to tell Sue Ella today to get a touch with the Palo people so they can do that. The weather is absolutely cooperating, so we can get that done.
You're not going to tell her today she's leaving?
No. Where? England.
No, that's...
Ma, you and I spoke about this a couple of weeks ago. Several people have approached me, and I want to know how the council feels about this, too. Several people have approached me that like garage sales. They would like a town-wide garage sale. I know nothing does this. One woman approached me, and then she called me back. She said, maybe instead of a town-wide, we could do it by wards, and this way people can know each other's. So again, I'm just bringing it to the council. I did a lot of requests on this. I mean, I don't know garage sales, but a lot of people like them, and I think he told me they're a big success. Not like...
They're a huge success. They're very popular, whether you do a town-wide garage sale or you do it by wards, people are very receptive to it.
I don't know, question, do you feel that?
I think that's a good idea.
How does it work? Do they end up having to get permits even though it's a town-wide thing?
There is a permitting process, yes, because we need to keep track of this, yeah.
I don't know when the time is. June is a good time, October. I mean, you have worked there, so I can do it.
I don't do that directly, but I'll be happy to investigate that and get back to you. Yes, we'll move on that.
Also, I'm glad to see that we now have online, you can pay your property taxes, your water bills. You have that option, and maybe during the public session, Mr. Shelley can just briefly talk about that.
Joe? I got a couple of letters...
All right, let's get the chairman.
I got a couple of letters recently from people that are upset about the condition of Washington Avenue. Signage on storefronts, signage in windows, flags, banners. In particular, there's also some complaints about... There's a new furniture store next to Abbott's drugstore, and they seem to think that the sidewalks that show, even on the way here tonight, I mean, half the block is covered in mattresses and all that kind of stuff, and I believe that's not allowed. There's also that restaurant supply store by the firehouse on Washington Avenue, and then that auto supply store that used to be Boston Store. They constantly have cars up on the sidewalk, store stuff over there. It just started to look really, really, really sharp. We put the new lights up, and they look nice, but now we have signs that are there forever. They have all kinds of details about what the signed ordinances are, covering windows and all that stuff. So that's something we could look into.
Sure, I'll be happy to give that to COVID forces.
Yeah, and be a little more proactive with that.
Yeah, we already had a discussion, DPW and myself, about posting Washington Avenue and giving it a good cleaning. I mean, now we're noticing all the debris and all the dirt and what have you from the winter, so we're going to make certain effort to clean that up, but also inform us in the Rizzo's office to get on this.
What about the rest of Graylock Parkway and Medium? Is that going to be done soon or at all?
The rest of the median?
Well, you know, they did the below Union Avenue part. We got rid of all those blocks, and they put the concrete. Now, the other half going up towards Chestnut is not done. Are they going to...
I believe the immediate plans, all right, are to pave that. We're going to clean it first, we're going to pave it, and then Mr. Harris, I believe, will be programming that.
He's listed in the spring.
Yeah.
What do you mean? We're going to... We have paved the median.
No, no, no. Paved the road, because the median was done, but the road, it was patched in by the...
They only did the bottom, below Union Avenue. They didn't... Well, I'm not talking about the median. I'm talking about the median.
No, I know what you're talking about.
So they didn't do above Union Avenue?
Right.
Are they going to do it to match? I guess what...
I believe that they are. I'll have to check with Mr. Harris.
Are they going to do both sides? Because now they tore it up to do the median, not the lower side.
Usually, when Mr. Harris programs an improvement, which I was pleasantly pleased about, he does milling, he does paving, he does curbs, he does sidewalks, and aprons. So he does a complete job. So without speaking to him, I would think that he would, because he's just that kind of guy.
What's going to... You mentioned the Friendly House. Sounds like you plucked at it with the generator, not with outfitting it for recreation. Are we... Have there been any meetings or the committee or anything like that?
The committee needs to meet. I know Councilwoman Burke had some discussions with some county personnel that she may want to share with you.
Yes. I was told that we're going to get 100 chairs and 10 tables to start off for nothing. So that's the story. At least we'll have someplace to sit.
Because I mean, we're going forever with this.
Well, you said there's some bond money for the Friendly House, didn't you?
There may be some... I need to check into that. The bond line I was speaking about this evening was for a generator, which was a separate grant aside from the other buildings that we were awarded.
I did run into Charlie Hood this weekend, and he said it was a great thing to be able to use that Friendly House for solid. So I think it would be great if we could use it for the rest of its intended purpose, which we thought...
There are many uses for that. I visited that.
But it's just dragged and then dragged and dragged. We keep talking about commitments. It's at least a year since the committee was formed, and no meetings were had.
Well, there was meetings, Joe. As a matter of fact, before Mr. Moore was here, we met at the Friendly House with the recreation director.
Yes.
And here it is.
Yes.
We're supposed to get temporary baskets of getting air...
For the kids.
Volleyball net, volleyballs, so they could play, and stuff like that.
Right, mats for tumbling.
Mats for tumbling and wrestling. So I mean, it's a... It's a process. I don't know what a requirement...
Any money tomorrow that we can get, a bond or something, to get this started?
I brought the bonds that we're moving on right now to you this evening.
Okay.
Because of timing, we need to get that done, especially the CBPG one.
Just because we don't...
But there will be other bonds that I'll be coming back to you requesting your approval on, and that's absolutely one of it.
Okay.
So we still don't know exactly what we're doing, but we're going to have more meetings.
Well, I'm going to go back and get the results of what the committee decided, and then we're going to follow through all the recommendations of the committee.
The firehouse, I mentioned that, you know, I feel we're going out for bids on the roof. I'm no contractor, but...
The roof and the masonry on the outside, yes.
I still don't understand why we wouldn't... We know we have a certain amount of money to go towards that building. Why wouldn't we get prices to fix everything and find out? And find out how much... I don't know, because it keeps making that noise.
I mean, you're going to get out of it.
Oh, yeah. So I don't even know what needs to be done there. I hear different stories, the roof, the sleeping quarters, the roof, the bathroom, the floors. Why wouldn't we go out?
The kitchen.
The kitchen.
Let him use your mic.
I want the mic over.
The question was...
Why wouldn't we, instead of just going out for getting prices on the roof, why don't we get prices on everything that needs to be done? Then we will know how much it will cost. We'll know if we have enough money, and if we don't, then we can make the appropriate decisions on what we're going to do in order... Because I keep hearing that, well, it's not such a big deal because we're going to get a new firehouse from a developer, but who knows when that will be and where it will be and what it will be like and all that stuff. We have a building, we had money. Why don't we do that?
The way it was explained to me was, it's a question of sequencing, all right? We have to seal the building. So the first and best place to start that, obviously, is with the roof and the masonry. While we're in the process of doing that, we can then plan the next phase, whether it's the flooring, the interior, or the bathroom. So it's going to be... It's going to be a sequenced improvement, all right?
It is. It still doesn't make sense to me.
It's not a project?
It looks like it's on... It's broken, I guess. The point is, why don't we find out how much it's going to cost to fix the building? It doesn't cost us anything to find out what it's going to cost to fix it. And we know we have a certain amount of money. So why don't we do that? That's what I had a resolution on tonight, to just get the price... Let's find out. I mean, because we're going to get prices on a roof, then we're going to start the roof, then we're going to finish the roof, and then a year from now, we're going to get prices on the bathrooms.
You don't know a year from now.
No, that's not... The sequencing is not... It's going to occur one after another, all right? And sometimes, when you put out an entire project like that, it becomes overwhelming. There are different items that are missed, all right? We want to assure that it's done the right way, it's done in a fashion that we just continue with the improvements, all right? And this is... Actually, it's probably a matter of style. Mr. Harris is very comfortable with doing it this way, and I have to defer to his expertise. I'm not a professional engineer.
If I lived over there, I would think it's never going to get done, just because I see the way it's been going, and, I mean, we've been talking about this for months, too. And we still don't have a contractor for the median.
I'm only here a couple of months, and in a couple of months, we're moving on this. We've moved on many of the redevelopment agreements. We're moving on reconciliation as far as what our bills are and what we owe. We're moving on the budget. We're halfway through, so everything is coming together. I can't speak to what went on before, but I can speak to you about what we're going to do moving forward.
I mean, we all did agree, and we voted, that we are going to renovate the City Lake Firehouse.
Yes.
And that's where it is. And I have to say that I believe that, unless I'm living in a dream world, I don't know. But that's what we're here for. Everybody gave their agreement.
I have a resolution on to ask that we go out and get the prices and find out what it's going to cost. You know, I see construction...
Does it cost any money to...
I see construction going on on the median roof. You know, I work by the World Trade Center. While they're still going up, they're putting sheetrock in down below. So it's not like you have to... You know, if this was your house, you wouldn't wait for the roof to be on before you fixed the bathroom necessarily, right?
Right, but you wouldn't fix the floor while the roof is still leaking, and you want to make bathroom improvements. I have other issues going on.
I know how much this is going to get done in a timely fashion with sheetrock. We're going to go out for all these progressive bids, and all that's going to take years.
I don't see it that way, if you like, and I don't know that it's necessarily accomplished to a resolution, but I can get an overall estimate for you, if you like, from Mr. Harris.
I think that's a great idea.
That's all I'm saying.
Get the estimate.
I'd be happy to.
Get the estimate.
That's all I'm saying is, can we just find out how much it's going to cost?
We can get an estimate, absolutely.
Because if we have that money, I don't know what to do. Shut your camera off. We might move to something else. Maybe a... Why aren't we doing that?
Oh, now you're doing it.
That's on mine, as well.
Maybe it's Bluetooth.
Does everybody have their cell phones on? Could that be setting it off?
Maybe it's Bluetooth. Maybe it's not.
Yes. We usually have it around, or is that called...
Is it loud? It's loud. So anyhow, all right, so can we do that? So we just know, and then we'll know if the 200 and however many thousand dollars we have will get us to a point where we...
Sure, absolutely, we can do that.
This thing about the minimum number of firemen, I'm concerned about that, because it doesn't seem to be a priority. You know, you hear fire trucks screaming down through our roadway, and you wonder if there's 12 firemen so that all three pieces of equipment can go out, because if there's 11, you can't. And there's no way of knowing when the next big fire is going to come. So why wouldn't we make that 12-man minimum right now? And I asked for that to be a resolution, but didn't make it off.
We are moving towards that, and actually, what I told the battalion chief in a conversation that we had, that if he believed that the safety of his men or of our residents ever comes into question, that he can absolutely go to 12, all right? So that, he has carte blanche with that, all right? If he feels it's necessary, in his professional opinion, all right? And again, in the short time that I'm here, I've had several discussions with our fire chief, all right, and with our fire representatives, and we're moving in a direction that I believe is going to accomplish that while not costing us any additional dollars, because what it comes down to at the end of the day, all right, is a dollar and cents issue, all right? Now, we're not going to put a dollar figure on someone's safety or someone's life, but we're trying to be reasonable here in containing costs, all right, while at the same time accomplishing what we need to as far as public safety is concerned.
Can we answer this? If we only have 11 firemen, we can only send out two trucks.
Correct.
And the fire is so big that we need help. We have to go to the town.
We always do. We always go to the town.
Let me finish my question. Do we have to reimburse those other towns for their help?
No, it's a mutual aid agreement. And again, if there's a fire that that's large, all right, the battalion chiefs know that they can go to 12.
It is irresponsible not to at all times be able to send all three pieces of equipment.
Joe, you know how many people are assigned to a shift?
16. Yeah. That's your number. But if there's not 12 there, all three pieces of equipment can't go out at one time. That's what the firemen said when they were here.
I know what they said. There shouldn't be 16. There were 70 men on... I believe there was 70 men who told us on the... In the department. They were three shifts.
And it comes down... Apparently, it comes down to an overtime issue.
It comes down to an overtime issue. When it comes down to, I believe, the firemen acting in good faith, too, with regards to vacation, sick time, and personal basis.
I mean, that's a decision that should be had, I suppose.
Right, and I think it's a manager's...
That's the discussion we had.
That's what he's been doing.
And I expect the recommendation back to the governing body by the next meeting. It would have been this meeting, all right, but they didn't have time to share what they're going to present back to us with their members. But I believe by the next meeting, we will probably be back to a 12-person minimum, while at the same time not breaking the bank.
Not breaking the bank. I think it should be the 12-person minimum while we're trying to not break the...
So no.
If tonight there's a huge fire, we can't send...
Part of order, Mayor. Should we be discussing this?
I think it's...
Especially on the contract.
This is within the exclusive profits of the manager to establish the things that are under discussion here. But if I'm not mistaken, Mayor, I think there might be a provision in the collective bargaining agreement with the firemen relating to this particular issue, which is, you know, it's subject to collective bargaining, but in any event, I believe the manager is doing exactly what he should be doing.
Yeah, I don't think we should be negotiating this in public.
I'm not negotiating. I'm not... I'm not talking about negotiations. You guys are. I'm not talking about negotiation, you guys are. I'm talking about being able to have three fire trucks out at the same time.
And I think what I expressed was I'm sure you're concerned, I've directed the battalion chief that if he feels necessary, he can go to 12, and by the next meeting, we should have a permanent resolution to this. While, while still spending wisely.
Yeah, Mauro, could you talk with the, both the presidents of both senior clubs, and perhaps go to one of each of their meetings?
Absolutely.
And speak with them, I know they have some issues with the construction going on at Frightful Manor, and I think they probably have some more issues, you know, around town. One of the presidents is here tonight, so.
Again, you're everything you're saying, sorry.
I had to turn the microphone off, I'm sorry.
Don't tell me to sit up.
He was talking about the senior center.
Florence, I told him to meet with you so he could go over some issues that you're having with the, with your members at the senior club.
Yes, I have a lot of, a lot of things that need to be addressed.
So, perhaps he could come to the senior club and speak with everyone?
Okay, very good.
Is that the Tuesday and Friday club?
Tuesday and Friday.
Tuesday and Friday, I'll be happy to.
That's it. It's more along those same lines, I know they're having parking issues up there, right, Florence?
Oh, please, yes.
So, that's one of the things we need to address. And evidently, the, the construction guys dumped a load of stuff on the bocce courts and anything, it's just, it needs to be cleaned up. It's practically, you know, out of control.
I'll speak in further participation.
First thing tomorrow morning, and we'll see what's there, if I have it correct.
I know we're talking about Franklin Street, paving Franklin Street, did we hear anything back from the county on that? Okay, just let me know if you get, get some input from them. And also, the, you know, getting Walnut Street out there.
Walnut Street is in fact programmed to be done this construction season.
I know we used to have a shredding event, and somebody had asked about that for us, I don't, I don't know if we can still do that, but just.
We can't have it now, I guess.
That's through our garbage company. Through our garbage company, speak with the president of the garbage company.
Oh, yeah, I saw a garbage company, they picked up all branches and trees on Clinton Street today. I think they all, all do a couple of miles of paint before, but they'll pick it up all cut bushes and everything, put them in the garbage truck. They'll put it up the garbage. I just wanna make one statement, you know, I believe every member of this governing body is interested in the safety of both the police and the fire department, but we have to let our manager do negotiations to keep these costs under control. So, I don't want nobody giving the wrong interpretation. We are, we do want everybody to be safe, not only them, but our residents, so we will do our best to put the men on while we control the force. Thank you, Mauro.
You're welcome.
Communications.
A communication received from St. Anthony's Church for permission to conduct a feast at St. Anthony's on Friday, June 10th, through Sunday, June 12th. A procession through the streets on Sunday, June 12th, and for the winter feast through May.
Make a motion.
Second.
Quick on the roll.
Councilmember Coserelli.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Longa.
Yes.
Nattari.
Yes.
Robell.
Yes.
Trumover.
Yes.
Mayor Trumover. A communication received from St. Anthony's Church for permission to hold a procession through the streets for the stations of the protest on Friday, March 25th.
Make a motion.
Second.
Quick on the roll.
Councilmember Coserelli.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Longa.
Yes.
Nattari.
Yes.
Robell.
Yes.
Trumover.
Yes.
Mayor Trumover. St. Anthony's Church received from Belville High School Board of Southeast negotiations for permission to conduct tag dates on weekends during the months of March, April, May, September, October, and November, and December of local business.
Make a motion.
Second.
Quick on the roll.
Councilmember Coserelli.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Longa.
Yes.
Nattari.
Yes.
Robell.
Yes.
Trumover.
Yes.
Mayor Trumover. And the rest received from Belville High School Board of Southeast Leaders for permission to conduct tag dates on weekends during the months of April and May.
Make a motion.
Second.
Quick on the roll.
Councilmember Coserelli.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Longa.
Yes.
Nattari.
Yes.
Robell.
Yes.
Trumover.
Yes.
Mayor Trumover.
Yes.
Ordinance number one for introduction and ordinance to amend revised general ordinances of the township of Belville, chapter 8-8 designated zoning zone.
Make a motion for its introduction.
Second.
Quick on the roll.
Councilmember Coserelli.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Longa.
Yes.
Nattari.
Yes.
Robell.
Yes.
Trumover.
Yes.
Mayor Trumover.
Yes. What is this, public hearing?
Ordinance number one for public hearing and ordinance creating personnel positions and a voting classification and compensation plan.
Make a motion and open it for public hearing.
Second.
Quick on the roll.
Councilmember Coserelli.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Longa.
Yes.
Nattari.
Yes.
Robell.
Yes.
Trumover.
Yes.
Mayor Trumover.
Going nowhere to go.
This is, this is a contractual with the, with the personnel, it's a 2% raise of course.
Spoke for what meaning?
The ones from Town Hall is, it's a part of it.
It's a part of it. Well, you know, I missed the public participation at the last meeting when the police or firemen had 2% raises. In the real world, where in the world, nobody gets raises. They're cut them, and I think, you know, my business up in the street, I cut my prices 33% just to pay the bills. So, in the real world, when I get me to, when you get 2% of 100, 150,000 dollars salary, it's a lot of money. And when we got secretaries earning 83,000 dollars a year, and still get 2%, you know, I got some companies I worked for, where they told my name in the paper, "What do you pretend to make?" When I brought them to salary list, they were fly又被asked it. One girl's the CEO of a company of 170 people, and when she saw it, she makes 75,000 dollars a year as CEO, and she sees secretaries making 83,000. So, you know, it sounds, oh, it's just 2% raise, it's 2%, it's not 2 dollars. But in the real world, people, their jobs are being cut, their salaries are being cut, their benefits are being cut in the real world. They have to pay more towards their hospitalization, if they even getting it anymore. And pensions are being drawn out, companies are not giving pensions anymore. So, you know, our objective is 2% raise. The tax paid Belville, my street alone, more plywood is bought, to board up another house. We got foreclosures up the Gazooon Belville. So, let's not just say, ah, it's 2% raise, it is killing us. And I like what you said earlier, Mr. Mayor, you gotta try to control costs, this is one thing, you gotta draw the line. The taxpayers in Belville can't afford 2% or even 2 dollar raises anymore. And we have to start really pulling strings on public voice, not only in Belville, statewide, it's getting crazy. They're fleeing New Jersey elect crazy, including 17 members of my family.
Thank you, sir.
So, there's Jerry Del Gersio at Grove Street. The ordinance that we're talking about, is that the ordinance that's posted on the board outside? Because that's more than just a, that's more than just a contractual, there's all type of titles out there, they're not under a contract. And a month ago, I mentioned during the public participation, that our zoning board secretary is only receiving 350 dollars a month, where the planning board secretary is receiving 500 dollars a month. Now, years ago, both secretaries, huh?
I'm trying to keep the question.
Mr. Mayor, alright, since, since you wanted to say, then I have to straighten it out. Years ago, both secretaries got the 500 dollars a month. And the council arbitrarily lowered both secretaries to 350 a month.
How long has it been in effect like that?
It's been a couple of years.
Few years, yes.
But unbeknownst to me, all of a sudden, the planning board secretary went back up to the 500. And the zoning board secretary never went back up to the 500, which I don't believe is fair, since we've due three to five times the amount of cases of the planning.
We will take that into consideration, but do you have something on this?
That's on this, I'm asking for an amendment to the ordinance.
The council will take it into consideration.
Anyway, you did your budget, you should have put in for 500 dollars.
What?
When you did your budget, you should have put in for her to get 500 dollars.
You did the budget.
No, I didn't do no budget, what are you talking about?
Well, somebody does the zoning and the planning board budgets.
Well, I'm not the one who reduced it to 350, the council did that on their own arbitrarily.
No, no, whatever comes to the, whatever comes to the, the manager and the council, that's what we put in, that's what goes on.
Well, we always had 500, the council decided to lower to 350, on their own, a number of years ago.
Long time.
A number of years ago. But then, they put the council, they put the planning board secretary back up to the 500, and I don't believe that's fair.
Well, put a recommendation into the director of that.
I'm asking you now to amend the ordinance.
No, we're not gonna amend it. I mean, I don't think we should.
Why do you think you should?
Because we should. Because it has to be this far. We have to see, we have to see if it's under the budget to be spoken about.
Under the budget, you're talking about a lousy 150 dollars a month, you're not talking about thousands.
Okay, is it the minister?
Now, this is, this, unless this were a typographical error, you should not, because in effect.
We advertise the whole thing, both advertise.
I think probably in principle, there's, there's agreement up there with the chairman, this is not the time to do it. It can be resolved, the post passes tonight if this ordinance passes.
It could always be amended, it could always be brought up out of later, we could do a smaller one.
And it could also go, that's what I'm asking.
Okay, okay.
That's what the governing body wants.
As long as you decide to do it, within a reasonable time, I have no problem.
It could be amended next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Nick Mafucci, 61 Continental. I'm in agreement with Jerry. We have far more cases than the planning board or any of the other boards. They're more complicated, much more paperwork, and it's much more work for the secretary. And I think she should at least be on par with the planning board.
Okay. Anything to me?
Phyllis, for Tantone, Mount Prospect Avenue. I think that in good faith, they should not get 2% raise, Social Security gap, no raise. We're not getting any raises out there for anything, and they're getting 2%, it's a lot of money on salaries that they're making. So, maybe you ought to table it and talk to the people that are charged.
For example, the first part of the statement says, "An ordinance creating personnel positions." What personnel positions are being created?
There's any created, isn't there?
No.
There's nothing created.
It's just putting the ordinance. There's nothing else created.
Make a motion, close the public hearing.
Absolutely.
Good evening, Mary Higgins, 148 Brighton Avenue.
Do I just, could you speak up, could you speak up now?
I will speak. Can you hear me now? I'd like to comment on a letter printed in the February 25th, 2016 edition.
I'm not publicizing, I'm not publicizing.
It's the ordinance, here only are the ordinance.
Oh, sorry, I'll come back later.
It's fine, it's in a few minutes.
Do you have something to say?
Hold on.
No.
Make a motion, close the public hearing, move for final adoption.
Second.
Quick on the roll.
Councilmember Coserelli.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Longa.
I just wanna say that I'm voting no, because it is, there are positions that are getting more than 2%. And I, my objection has been noted already, so I vote no to this ordinance.
Nattari.
Yes.
Robell.
Yeah.
Trumover.
Yes.
Mayor Trumover.
Yes. Make a motion to open public participation. Quick on the roll.
Councilmember Coserelli.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Longa.
Yes.
Nattari.
Yes.
Robell.
Yes.
Trumover.
Yes.
Mayor Trumover.
Now you're speaking.
Thank you.
Oh, no, no, that's all right. No, no behind.
Go ahead. Let her speak.
Listen, a couple from 24, 27. I wanna thank you very much, Ms. Bird, for the support she gave me with my mom, she got an ambulance. And also, she came to my street, and she's working on, and I wanna thank you all of them. To reconsider this matter, because, you know, my street is completely, you get away. Also, I would like to put it in one word, by the tax. Our salary doesn't get any better, we get cut off. The tenant's salary doesn't get any better, the taxes go out, so who can win that loser the hope? I hope all of you can take this as a, you know, reconsider this, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Somebody get up.
All yours.
Good evening, Mary Higgins, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I would like to comment on a letter printed in the February 25th, 2016 edition of the Belville Times written by Belville Deputy Mayor Steve Rovell. Quote, "Mr. Escudino decided to return full-time to the township's tax assessor position requiring an immediate need for a township manager. Mr. Mauro Tucci, who had served as our township manager before, and has over 40 years' experience in local government, was good enough to take on the job of township manager on very short notice. So, all of a sudden, Mr. Tucci rides into Belville like a knight on shining armor from Nutley, where he serves as a commissioner to save us. Do you think the people in Belville are stupid? This was a planned and swiftly executed handshake deal. Let's look at the quality of service over quantity of time, quality over quantity. When Mr. Tucci was our township manager, there was a budget surplus in the millions. Did the taxpayers get a reduction? Anybody remember?
Nope.
Well, the answer is no, not a single penny. Why was it there any mention of his track record in the letter as town manager? No comment, thank you, I'll continue. The letter goes on to state, "What a bargain the taxpayers are getting with Mr. Tucci's contract." Mr. Tucci, I'm not blaming you for this, this was handed to you, nothing personal, right?
So, no.
Quote, "However, Mr. Tucci does not receive health benefits, performance bonuses, or pension benefits, which saved the township a considerable amount of money." Really? In the cherry picking of the contract details, Mr. Rovell deliberately omitted mentioning the 139,500 salary for an interim position, which is more than double the salary of our previous town manager. A 24/7 car, 28 vacation days, 15 sick days, and the worst one of all to me, no stated work hours. No mention of any monitoring of his performance. How does the state tax dollars, and who is monitoring Mr. Tucci's hours and work performance? Who's monitoring him? Anybody? No, thank you. This letter was not written.
I, I just would like to answer that question.
Yeah.
It's not that it's being monitored, when the town manager's on call 24 hours a day, there's no way that they could be monitored. He could be working excess hours all the weekend, he could be working a weekend. If we state the hours, do we wanna pay him overtime for the time he works?
No. Can you give me an example according to the contract? I understand what you're saying, Mayor. According to the contract, though, he's absolved from even working one hour a week. It can work in the opposite way, it can work 52 hours in a week, 40 hours, working one hour a week.
It could, but in the, in the time that he's been here.
It's arbitrary.
Well, in the time that he's been here, I see him every day.
Well, I came here a couple of times to say hello to him, I mean, five times, and he wasn't here. And I left my name with the secretary.
Okay.
But the car was parked outside.
Do you want to go on, please?
All right, just came to say hello, all right, now.
Actually, I pulled in as you were pulling out.
All right.
If you speak about the day that you were filming, yes, I pulled in, I was out to lunch. It was later in the day, and I pulled in as you were pulling out, okay, in my car.
All right, in your car.
In my car, yes.
Did you buy the new car yet?
You don't use a town car.
No, I don't use a town vehicle.
Did you get the new car as promised in your contract yet?
There is a car that's provided for me in my contract, no, I have not utilized a township car. I utilized it for one day, and then I returned it back to the fleet where I felt it belonged. And I've been using my 2008 Jeep every day since then, without even reimbursement for gas, which I'm not asking for. So, I don't, I don't use that.
Well, that's where I guess the contract did not state the police, the police car, it was another car. So, it's nice that you let the police, take that car back.
There is no car, there's no park.
There's no park, but you're entitled to it in the contract.
There's a 2008 Jeep, yes, I am entitled to it.
All right, okay, so let me continue.
Okay, please.
I can understand if Mr. Rovell wrote this letter as a private citizen, but he didn't.
I do.
It was an attempt to rationalize what could never be rationalized because there are errors of omission. In cherry-picking Mr. Tucci's contract, you would have us believe that you actually did us a great favor when all we were handed were the pits. Stop trying to give it a halo effect. Stop using your position of public office to build a power base with a favorite few and ignoring those who are saddled with Mr. Tucci's salary. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mafucci, sixty-one Continental. I didn't hear anything more said earlier, but at last meeting, did we not hire grant writers?
No. No, we'll be going out on our own for grant writers.
Was something under West? They were torn down.
We discussed that. We definitely never authorized it.
One follow-up. Mrs. Frank Tantoni?
Phyllis, Frank Tantoni, Mount Prospect Avenue. I hear that you are thinking about a track up at the field in Bellev. Well, I thank you if you do put it in because when they renovated that field, I had asked them, "Please put a track up there." Because I used to go to Nutley over there and walk, and there was nothing in Bellev. And they told me it never could be done because there was not enough room between the field and the stands.
The track we were going to plan, Mrs. Frank, we're applying to Green Acres where we go on what we consider the JB field, not around the public road.
All right. Well, at least there'd be a track up there.
Yes.
There'd be something.
Yes, we're trying.
Right. And I'm investigating it again at the request of the mayor or the town council.
Well, I hope so because...
So do I.
Bellev doesn't have many things like that. And talking about the firehouse with the firemen, why can't we use volunteers? A lot of towns use them. And years ago, people from Bellev, in fact, friends of mine's kids, came to this town meeting, not this town meeting, but a town meeting, and offered to work the EMTs, work as EMTs at the firehouse. But Bellev said no, so now they work in Nutley. They went to Nutley where Nutley welcomes their volunteers to do the work, and Bellev does not welcome volunteers with things like that. We would save money. These people are well-trained, and I think it would be a good thing for Bellev and build up the morale of the people in Bellev. Graylight Parkway, is the center median staying like that? Are you doing anything else with it?
The detail is yes. We're going to talk about it.
Do you want to check with Joe Burrow? We're going to... From Union Avenue down, it's finished, correct? We're going to check with Tom Harris to see if the upper part is going to be repaired the same way.
Okay. I was in Harrison or East Norwood. I forgot where I was the other night, which town. They had a center median exactly like Bellev has. They concreted it, and they put lights up in the center. It was a long pole and two lights hanging off the sides. It looked nice. In fact, it looked like it was a quaint little town. Why can't we do something like that? We just do it, and it looks like concrete. That's it. Do something to beautify it, to make it look nice. I mean, call Public Service. They might even offer to make work. Like you told me, they couldn't pay for the light on Union Avenue, which a lot of the county paid for. But call them and find out what could be done. Maybe we can do something to beautify it. Because just to have the concrete there doesn't look really nice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Frank Tantoni?
It's a microphone deal with the firemen here. We, council, have created a position, Director of Technology, who gave to a guy who's got a very nice lucrative pension, and he got a rate of sixty-five thousand. The last time Jack was getting almost seventy thousand. Why can't he take care of his microphones and teach them how to use it? He's getting paid good bucks. He's the Director of Technology. That should be part of his job. In regards to the fire trucks, I brought this to mayor's attention. Tomorrow will be three weeks. At midnight of January, he woke up at bed, and the entire fire department, three trucks were in front of my house. It happened two doors over. Somebody left the stove on. There was a gas leak. But all three trucks were out that night, three weeks ago tomorrow.
That was brought to the instruction code official. I remember in your office, we called his attention. And he was going to check into it. I don't know if we got a recorder on it, but it was brought to the attention of the...
Well, I spoke to the mayor, but I just want to make the point, all three Bellev trucks were there.
They don't always not have twelve guys there. It's just when they don't, then they can't have them.
Well, I still haven't got my answer as to how many men are getting paid but not working because they're using up their unused sick leave or vacation time. So, I'm still waiting for that answer. But don't take up my time. Now, in regards to what Mr. Tucci said about Mr. Harris does a complete job, I'd like to differ with you. I don't know if you've been up to our municipal stadium. I thought something you did. On Norton Street? Okay. He planted trees in front of the stadium, Norton Street. You know where he planted them? Eighteen inches from the stadium wall. I took the picture. I brought it to account. Now, they're grown, and the branches are growing into the stadium and all that. So, and there's other things. In addition, he required a whole public hearing on the CDBG grant. The last several years, I come to those meetings. This year, I come with another citizen, and he's never here. The one time, he was down in Edison, and I had to sit here and wait for him to call me. And then my recommendation constantly every year is to clean and reline the water mains, which should be done before you praise him for doing the roads and the curves and the sidewalks. He shouldn't be doing that. Mr. Tucci, I brought it on the contract.
Mr. Frank Tantoni, I've heard you at the last two meetings say that, and I agree with you. All right? And I'm praising him for the planning work that he's doing on the roads that I'm involved in right now, the nine roads that we're going to be doing, which includes milling, paving, curbing, sidewalks, and aprons. So, in that regard, your recommendation was in fact a good one. I totally agree with you. I've transmitted that over to him. He will be checking all the infrastructure before we do any more paving projects.
I think...
Okay? I can't speak to the trees that were planted in front of the stadium because I wasn't here.
But I'm talking about you praising him, and I've criticized him publicly on many occasions on what he's...
Well, you all have opinions for the road work that he's going to be doing now. Under my watch, I'm going to make sure that they're completed.
But I'm not talking about opinion. I'm talking facts, which I can back up with pictures.
Fine.
All right. Now, I'm glad you could make the Mr. Saturday point.
Well, Mr. Frank Tantoni, I was sick. And I'm sure I wish that on anyone, and I'm sure you wouldn't either.
I take exception to the... Supposedly, you're supposed to be the author of the town manager ad that's going out and all that. Just briefly, one of the things, why would we put a thing in there that requires twenty years' experience? I mean, you could have a good town manager who worked five years, did extraordinary things for a township and all, has a wonderful record in another town, and maybe the... That in itself shows...
Well, he doesn't have to be a manager twenty years.
The what?
He does not have to be a manager twenty years. Twenty years...
It says government experience.
Government experience. I'm working it out. I have forty years' experience as a manager.
Why? Why? There are people who could exhibit extraordinary accomplishments in a few short years. That in itself limits the field to quite a few people. And I don't want to take up my time going through it. But that should be... And I know it was just advertised in the League of Municipal Paper. It should be advertised in a lot more places and a lot wider circulation than that. It's crazy what we're doing. In regards to the corners, Mr. Tucci, he's a good speaker. He talks real fast and real fast and said, "No, the corners are probably because of age." The outside of the building was done, renovated not too long ago. In fact, the parrot pit, where all we done, and that side, the south side up front, was rebuilt. You'll see the little slight different color. So, whatever is not due to age, you know? So, whatever it's about, I'm glad it's being taken care of. But I just wanted to correct you, you know, some of the...
Well, don't correct me because I'm, again, I'm not a professional engineer, but I did in fact consult the professional engineer, all right? And the contractor who's making the repair, all right? Who told me it's because of age, and it's because of water, and it's a terracotta mixture that they trowel on there, and that's why it was peeling. Because my question was, if that was concrete or some other concrete-like material, why is it peeling? I've never seen that happen. All right? And I was a public works director for thirteen years, so it's not that I'm a novice coming to this. But then I learned that it's not concrete, it's terracotta, and because of age and because of water, that caused the peeling.
Well, we should...
So, I can only relate to you the comments that I received from the professionals.
We should go after the contract that was done to Gory administration, and this, I'm not sure if you made it from the town manager when it was done, the renovation. So, you should go over...
Perhaps, but I don't believe so, but I'll be happy to check.
All right. Well, I'm sure it was done to the Gory administration. And now with the state aid, at the last meeting, I brought up, you know, I showed you the tax bill plus the state aid, what they equated. And then, Mr. Mayor, you alluded to, you said something like, "Oh, what do they want to do? Eliminate, not take state aid?"
And you said yes.
I have been a proponent. I lobby our legislators to eliminate the state aid. I forgot the whole regimen. I did a chart from our tax bills and state aid from nineteen ninety-one to two thousand. In nineteen ninety-one, when Florio started the state aid business, right? What it was, it was another way to pick our pockets. But it was Bellev Municipal only got one million dollars in aid. Then it went to three, then it went to four, then it went up to eight and nine million dollars. In that same nine-year period of time, our tax rate still went up exponentially. The board of ed was even worse. They went from one million dollars in aid to eighteen million dollar aid. We saw no tax relief. And as I testified in several assembly hearings, I showed them that chart, I showed them our tax bill. The only thing state aid did was allow local governments to create more positions and give out rates of salaries and hide it. So, it didn't look... You know, Uncle Jimmy came to live with you for ten years. He was rich, so he was giving you ten thousand a month, and you were living high and the hot. Uncle Jimmy died, and then what happened? You got that lifestyle. That's what's happening in government with state aid. It was a fraud because the governments, you know, couldn't raise that. People were objecting to taxes. So, I called the Gang of One Twenty, Don Trenton. They, in conjunction with local politicians, who do state aid? State has no money. They have no money. I told you this, Reggie. I just paid my income taxes. My state contract applies, my sales tax, my income tax, all the things. They pay from us, and then they give it back to you guys to spend on the state level. So, no such thing as state aid. It's taxpayers' pockets that pay every single penny of the thing. Now, today's March eighth. Yeah, I'm going to finish up. Today's March eighth. Mr. Tucci is a great town manager, so he's got, according to state law, he's got ten days. March eighteenth is when the proposed budget is due. Let's see if finally, one year, we can remember the proposed budget. I'm not asking to approve. State laws and... State has its budget in. Other towns have their proposed budget. Our property, other towns. He's got ten days. Let's see how good he is. We can get that proposed budget in your hands by the eighteenth.
Good evening. Michael Shelton, twenty-seventh Fletch Street. Councilman Nutari asked me to say a few words about the online property tax or the payment system. But before I do that, late this afternoon, I got an emergency announcement from the Bellev Police Department, which was already posted to the township website, but it wasn't discussed earlier this evening. So, I'd just be like to quickly read this. This is going to impact as well the senior center. This involves a closure of Franklin Avenue, I'm sorry, Mill Street, between Franklin Avenue and Harrison Street. It says, "Please be advised that Mill Street will be closed for construction to all vehicular traffic from Franklin Avenue to Harrison Street starting Wednesday, March ninth, to Friday, March eleventh, from nine AM to five PM. Drivers may also experience roadway detours and delays in or around the area of Mill Street in your home. Please be advised that residents and parents picking up children at Sandy Lane Nursery School can do so by approaching the marked police unit at Mill Street and Harrison Street and advising the officer that you're going to Sandy Lane or that you are a resident. Please be advised residents attempting to access the senior building may do so by approaching the marked police unit at Mill Street and Franklin Avenue, advising the officer that you need to get to the senior building." So, I just wanted to bring it to everyone's attention. This is posted on the township website if anyone should need to consult it.
Thank you.
In regard to the online property tax payment system, first of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Tucci for acting so swiftly and bringing this about. Last year, there were a number of delays in the online control, but within a couple weeks of Mr. Tucci becoming town manager, he looked at the system, made sure it was ready to go, and gave me the authorization to enable it. So, I thank you on behalf of the township for trying to bring this to fruition. As far as the payment system goes, the system, I want everyone to be aware of the fact that there are some fees involved in using it. If you elect to use a checking account, there's a dollar five transaction fee, which is, I guess, the cost of a standard gas debit card coming to the town hall to pay your property tax bill in person. If you use a Visa checking card, there's a three dollar ninety-five cent transaction fee. But there's one thing that everyone needs to be mindful of is the cost if you use any other credit card. The fee can be as much as two point nine five percent, not two dollars ninety-five cents, two point nine five percent of your property tax bill. So, if you have a two thousand dollar portion of the tax payment and you're hit with roughly a three percent surcharge transaction fee, that's another sixty dollars. But I've made special efforts with the recommendation of Mr. Tucci to let everyone know that that surcharge has nothing to do with the township. That money is not going to the township. That's a arrangement between a given resident and their financial services provider. So, please, if you're going to use the online property tax payment system, use either a checking account or a Visa debit card. Stay away from using any other credit card. At this point, we're kind of in the doldrums. We're on the off-season for property tax payments. We're five weeks into this current quarter, but I see from the traffic logs of the website, roughly twenty to thirty people per day are visiting the admin site or through the township website. But I assume that once we get close to the end of April and another quarter is upon us, that the uptick in traffic will be very significant. But in anticipation of that, I'm in the process of moving the township website to a new hosting company. For the last year, it's been hosted with GoDaddy, not the best company in the world. Great if you're a seventeen-year-old blogger, but not the best company if you're hosting a business or commercial or government website. We're going to be using Bluehost. And it turns out that Bluehost not only is more powerful, does more services, but is one-third the cost of GoDaddy. And I've been very cognizant throughout this process of trying to save every possible penny. Had we opted at the get-go for a private hosting service dedicated server, the fee's going to be as much as three thousand dollars a year just for the hosting. To date, it's only cost the township less than three hundred dollars for the hosting. So, I'm doing everything I can to minimize the cost of the website. So, that's all I have to say about it. If anyone has any questions about the, the online system, feel free to contact them through the township website. Thank you.
Well, I hope you can all hear me, and I'm sorry that I hollered out, but that's why you have microphones, and I'm sure I'm not the only one sitting out here that can't hear at times at meetings. When it comes to the senior building, first of all, when I first went around there, it was a disgrace. Thanks to Mayor Kimball and Kevin Esposito keeping after them, we got the place wiped down, painted, we got new chairs, we got new tables, made the place very presentable. That's why I don't want just anyone coming in there and think they can do whatever they want in that building and destroy what we fought for, to have a decent-looking place. So thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, um, this robo-call, I wasn't home to receive it. Every time that we've had the street blocked off, when the police car is there, it faces south, he's sitting in the car and he doesn't see anybody coming from this direction, this way. When you get up to him, he's not the least bit aware you want to go into that street to get to the senior building. So he's gotta get out of the car and watch the people to make sure they can get in, because I have a meeting on Friday. I'm tired of fighting the construction people over parking. I always have to tell them to move because they take all the places we're supposed to use. And so he needs to do that, because I know I'm gonna have to call our lady that does the calls to tell her to start making calls, that they will be able to get into the club if they let the police officer know that he's sitting there or standing in the street like he should be, uh, so that we do have a meeting. They're gonna think we don't have a meeting. The sewer pipes by the, the senior building, um, now that, well, all right, we got that, that they're gonna be, uh, the police will be there. Now, I did talk to, um, to Billy Gilbert, because we've been invaded with mice. We've got police, uh, police, mouse droppings around there like you can't believe, all over the place. And so I did speak to Billy about that, and he did have the exterminator come in, um, to take care of that. Now, against the back of the building, I, I don't know who looks this property over, but I do drive in and out of the lot. I look the place over all the time. I shouldn't worry about the building, but unfortunately, I do. Uh, there's five porta-potties sitting against the back of our building. They don't belong to us. We don't use them. We have bathrooms inside. Even though some of the men in the club, another club, use our toilets when we're not there. Because when I was in one day, getting ready for a bus ride, I went to go into the ladies' room, and a man happened to be coming out of it. So he doesn't belong in there. But anyway, porta-potties belong behind their fence, on their side, not against our building. And tonight, four o'clock, when I went through there before I had come over here, one of the doors of the porta-potty was wide open. God knows who's gonna go in there, what they're gonna do, knock these things over from where they sit against this building. It, it's terrible. Oh, and I forgot one thing to tell Billy Gilbert when I was talking to him. All the drain pipes coming down on the parking lot side, they're all flattened out. No water can come down through these pipes. So please, let's get that taken care of. Um, all right, that's enough with the, with the club, but, um, Mr. Tucci, there are a few things that I have to say privately, I really can't say publicly. When it comes to things there, it wouldn't be, you know, the proper thing to do. Something else was on my mind about that. Ooh, well, it might come to me anyway. Uh, Greylock Parkway, I like the new island that's been put in, the way it looks so far, but it's gonna be nice when the rest of the street is done. It's like half the job was done and half was not done. And the fact that I live above Union Avenue, not that it makes a difference, but it is part of the project, and a little bit over the, the side of the hill, so it, it doesn't look nice now when you drive down and you see this half-done job, you know, in the middle of the street and the way it's been finished. Um, and also, um, Mr. Tucci, I wish the Board of Education moved as fast as you have in the short time you're here, doing their investigation of what happened to our money over there at the Board of Education and who's responsible. So I think they should get moved faster than they expect you to move. Um, and not only that, now, all I heard tonight was the debris on the Bachi Court. Is that all that matters up there? Did you look at the rest of this property?
Talking about the park.
It's a dump, let's face it, mud, everything. Now, who's worried about it? They never use it. They never used it before it was moved. So what's the difference right now, whether or not there's debris on it? We got debris all over the place up there. Um, let's see. Oh, and when it comes to social security, what we were given the year before, the government took away from us. We're back where we were over a year ago. So we're no further ahead with our money. We need to draw the line in this town. Salaries are getting out of sight. I don't care about any union, what they say or what, fight the darn union. Tell them you're killing the people. The middle class in this country has been killed because of this federal government, of what they have done to us. I pay a lot of money in supplemental insurance. So, I mean, why should a lot of us suffer for people that are trying to live high on the hog and don't want to hear what's happening? If they worked in the private sector, they would soon find out what it is to earn a living. Um, let me see, what else do I have? There was something else on the building, but I will take that up with, with Mr. Tucci. Thank you.
Criminal question, one thirty-two, Franklin Street, Belville. Mr. Tucci, first of all, you have been openly attacked, in my opinion, this evening. You know, that's my personal opinion. You have been on this job a very short time. I think it's fair that we all give you a sporting chance to, you know, make a real change as the town manager.
Thank you.
You know, if, you know, believe me, we'll come, we'll come get you, you know, if, you know-
I know, I know you will.
If you flat-out lie. And, you know, I've been, we've been coming to these meetings for the last, you know, year and a half, two years, whatever it's been, about the firehouse, okay? We live next door to it, okay? Now, I understand that, you know, it's, you know, it's an old building and, you know, it needs to be renovated and this and that, and we've heard nine thousand different reasons, point blank. We have heard that there is, now, again, in the paper, it says the bond is two hundred and forty-seven thousand. I originally heard it was two sixty-five, then it was two fifty-five. There was a rumor floating around that it was four hundred thousand, okay? We need to know how much is actually bonded for the renovation and reopening of this firehouse, because I do not want to hear, after all these estimates are done, and this and that, and the roof, and this and that is done, that this town is not reopening that firehouse, because that would be a huge mistake. I've been yelling at this council for months about this, okay? I think, in all fairness, that by the next meeting, that you should have all your happy little ducks in a row. I expect the fire chief to be here, I expect representatives of the fire department to be here, and I expect an answer. End of discussion. It has gone on too long. That's another thing with the, the pressure in the, um, fire hydrants, okay? We need to know, it's not, I understand, we get the water from Newark. Believe me, I know of what I speak. It is the town's responsibility to make sure the pressure is there and make sure that they're up to standard, okay? So please, like I said, I've been yelling at these poor council people for many years, many months now about this. And God bless everybody, they've all been trying to do everything right, but enough is enough. So please, by the, by next meeting, I think we have, you know, been patient enough to get definitive answers. Do you think that's fair enough?
Sounds fair to me. I'm not sure that the fire chief, uh, permission of the mayor council, I'm not sure the fire chief is the person to speak about the renovation, uh, but if you'd like, I-
Who would be, though?
Uh, the engineer.
Then get the engineer here.
Yeah, I'd be happy to get the engineer here, sure.
Get the engineer here.
Sure, this way.
Get whoever you need to get here to answer a question, a yes or a no question. Because, like I said, enough is enough with this. It's not on too long, because like I said, I don't want you to burn through that two hundred forty-seven thousand, four hundred thousand, whatever it is, and then not reopen it. Because that would be, that would end, that would put everybody in this town in danger.
Let's get a quick figure on, whoop on, we actually have a firehouse, and then we're gonna get a price on what it would have cost to repair it, and then we'll make that determination.
Right.
And also, one other last thing, it, you know, in the paper, it says, if it's in next year's budget, hello, it's, it's in the budget. It's there. The money is there. Just please-
We're gonna see how much is there.
Right.
Yes.
And, and we, I'd like to get a definitive answer, because like I said, I've heard from a half a million to, you know, to a quarter of a million.
We'll, we'll ask our purchase and agent, let's actually in that bond, and we'll go-
Absolutely.
All right, like I said, I'm holding you responsible.
You do that, and I'll get you your answer.
Like I said, I hope I'm not disappointed.
You will not be disappointed.
All right.
Frank question, one thirty-two, Franklin Street. It's hard to top my wife after that, but I just need to ask a question. Okay. I understand that we're, we all committed to renovating and rebuilding that firehouse. Let me ask you this question. Are you intending to reopen it as a firehouse? Yes or no?
I think, I, the truth is, I, I probably would have to see what it's gonna cost, determine that person, how much money is in the bond. Uh, I think we got to get those answers before anybody makes a commitment to you.
Well, Mr. Mayor, we all, we all made a commitment already.
I know, but it would cost five million dollars, uh, then maybe I might change your mind.
It's a small one-family house, go fuck.
Yes.
Mr. Fritter, then I threw a figure, I don't know what it's gonna cost. Do you know what it's gonna cost?
I can give you a good estimate, and I guarantee it'll be accurate. After forty-four years of experience, my estimates are on par.
Give me, give me a figure, so then when the, the professionals come in, I'll know.
I already opened the bond, I had, Kelly got me this-
No, give me a professional opinion, how much it costs to get renovated.
Why don't you people know? What? The bond orders for two hundred and seventy thousand, I guarantee you, the renovation could be built at two seventy.
Well, we'll see.
And that, that roof, that's like a one-family house, it should cost more than ten thousand dollars.
You're giving me a two hundred and seventy thousand dollar figure. Let's see what our engineers and the architects say.
Yeah, well, they got, they got big pockets.
Okay.
They're the local roofer.
Okay, Mr. Fritter, go ahead. That's getting my conversation with you, Mr. Flesch.
I mean, we all, we all did make a agreement.
You're fin- I'm sorry, are you finished, Mr. Flesch?
Oh, yes.
Of whom?
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Second motion, close.
Second.
Quick roll.
Councilmember Coserelli, Kennedy, Longo, Nittari, Robell, Schumover, yes.
Second.
Number one, and number fourteen.
Point four.
Just one and fourteen.
One and fourteen.
Councilmember Coserelli, Kennedy, Longo, Nittari, Robell, Schumover, yes.
Resolution number one.
I was just thinking, you have first?
Second.
No, I am, I am.
So was there anything in particular?
No.
Just the-
Councilmember Coserelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
No.
Nittari?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Resolution number fourteen.
Move it.
Second.
Quick roll.
Councilmember Coserelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
No.
Nittari?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Schumover?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Resolution number fourteen.
Move it.
Second.
Quick roll.
Councilmember Coserelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
No.
Nittari?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Schumover?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Yes.
New business?
I want to take resolution.
I want to take motion and take resolution.
You can't go, maybe, maybe it's not over.
Yes, yes, I mean. Can we still hold them?
I would like to move that we take the resolution off the table.
Second.
Resolution one.
Our resolution on the table for the board.
Got it.
Quick roll.
Councilmember Coserelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Nittari?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Schumover?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Yes.
New business?
I want to take resolution.
I want to take motion and take resolution.
You can't go, maybe, maybe it's not over.
Yes, yes, I mean. Can we still hold them?
I would like to move that we take the resolution off the table.
Second.
Resolution one.
Our resolution on the table for the board.
Got it.
Quick roll.
Councilmember Coserelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Nittari?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Schumover?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Well, I'm gonna vote no, because I think in the discussion, we were gonna discuss this with the reunion. This is part of-
I'm sorry.
The discussion we're going to have is gonna be on shared service.
Shared service?
Yeah, it's on shared service. They would, they would-
No, 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 this is just that thing, uh, the manager said, let's take it off the table, and then we could always put it back, we could always go back to it at the shared service.
If they don't follow through, then we can restate it.
Robell?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Yes, sir.
Yes?
New business? Move resolution number one, but there has a change in it.
This is with regards to the fire engine, there should be-
Son of a-
Uh?
Go ahead.
Hey, yeah.
Respectfully, as a member of the governing body, add the following words to the end of the first act, the second recital, which says adversely impacted by the disposition of this vehicle. And then it has the word "and" right after that, is not needed for public use, which I have been assured it has not been needed for public use by the fire chief.
Make a motion, we amend it. Move it.
Second.
Quick roll.
Councilmember Coserelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Nittari?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Schumover?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Move resolution B.
I'll second.
Quick roll.
Councilmember Coserelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Nittari?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Schumover?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Yes. Move resolution D.
Second.
Quick roll.
Councilmember Coserelli?
Well, can we, uh, have the approval of the town engineer? I'm voting yes, but before, where he's actually paid.
Yes, absolutely.
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Nittari?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Schumover?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?